All right, welcome everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum tonight. This is the regular school board meeting of the Edina School Board for July 17, 2017. This does happen to be the first regular school board meeting for Dr. Schultz as our new superintendent. So I will give him the honors of walking through the highlights of the agenda.
Thank you Chair Wallen-Friedman. So just wanted to review that on June 29th. You had a special meeting for some agreements and some affidavits for candidacy for the school board. And on July 10th had a retreat for board team building. And I'm learning that I have to advance things too. So there we go.
Did you push your?
I did. Thank you. So at tonight you'll approve the minutes. We'll have a chance for hearing from audience members if anybody's come forward. You'll manage the consent. It's got a number of items on consent. I'm not going to go through each one because I know all of you have read that. In reports and discussion, the topic tonight will be on the operating levy coming up in November. Talk about the agendas moving forward for 1718. And Board Chair will walk through the board committees' appointments, liaisons, and reps for that. And then also the policy committees bringing forward some policy review. And then for action, asking you to approve the long-term facilities maintenance budget and also other policy reviews. So that introduces the meeting for tonight. It's kind of the Margot Baugh show tonight, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, the first thing on our agenda is approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of June 12th, the regular meeting of June 12th, and the special meeting of June 29th, all 2017?
Second.
Are there any corrections to any of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of June 12th. Work session June 12th, regular session, and June 29th, special meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Hearing from members of the audience. Sarah, do we have anyone? No, kind of a quiet night, everybody. All right, next is the consent agenda. Are there requests by any money to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion.
I'd like to abstain.
Okay.
I'd just abstain.
All right, six in favor, one abstention. Motion nevertheless carries. Reports and discussion are next. First is the operating levy proposal. Margot, this is why Dr. Schultz said that it's your show tonight.
We have been discussing the district's financial position and the potential, well, for sure, operating referendum renewal and potential increase. On and off for a number of months now at work sessions, but now getting closer into more detail on it. So just want to provide an overview this evening in regards to our multi-year, long-range financial planning process, some assumptions behind, and recommendations on the operating levy proposal. We did have a special finance committee meeting last Thursday morning for discussion of this, and now we're bringing it forward to you as a board. We do have to follow the election dates as required. Anytime a district holds an election and for operating referendum, it will require approval of the resolution in the ballot language at our August meeting. It has to be no later than August 25th in order to get the information to the county and follow all the other appropriate timelines for the election. So included in the information is a budget and levy adoption calendar, a flow chart basically to show at any one given time, we're working on multiple years. And we also touch the district finances and have information that updates where we're at financially at any given point in time. And it's rather fluid. Enrollment changes, audit changes, legislative changes. But this flow chart is intended to give you an idea of when we're receiving information and how and when we're updating you as a board, and then also internally just what we're doing. Because it doesn't necessarily always come to you, certainly the legal requirements and when we, and through board policy, what we bring to you. But know that we're always internally working on the district finances and monitoring them. We have, over the summer here, just made some 1718 budget adjustments that did not impact staffing. In order to make sure that our long-range projections are looking a little bit better, we made 500,000 worth of adjustments. One is accessing federal special ed funding one time. As we looked at those dollars, we're able to access those dollars for one year instead of the state funding program and offset some costs there. Workers' compensation, we're expecting a rebate in March of 2018. Increase overall enrollment by 12 students, primarily at the secondary level, and then reallocating and maximizing some of our other funding sources. So that's just an update on this year since I provided you the budget update in June. We use multiple projection models to assist in the multi-year planning. And the enrollment projection model provides five years' worth of history and then five years' worth of projections. It is not a demographic study model. It is truly an enrollment projection model. It does have 17 different methods of projecting enrollment from more liberal to conservative. And we tend to be stable and not increasing significantly here in the district, but we are fortunate not to be declining here. We use the enrollment projection model then to feed into the long-range financial planning model because enrollment, we are based, we are funded based on our number of students or average daily membership. And so that is the key. Those two factors, the state funding formula and enrollment, drive the majority of our revenue, not all of it. And then the financial planning model system has a variety of inputs to include the enrollment, the state aid, other types of revenues and expenditures. Are there one-time sources of expenditures that need to be reduced or added? For example, we have elections every other year. So with the financial planning model, I make sure that every other year there's that expenditure, but then there's a savings every other year. That would just be a small example. And then the negotiation costing models that we use as we do negotiations with the various bargaining units. We certainly use that data once we have settled to make sure that we are incorporating the actual results into the long-range financial planning model. What's key and important in our multi-year planning model is understanding the base assumptions. And I will say here in Edina, we have, to my knowledge, we've always taken a multi-year approach to the financial planning and looking ahead at the district financial position versus only looking annually. And at times made even adjustments or reductions in the budget, looking two or three years ahead in an effort not to have to necessarily do it on an annual basis, which is good in balancing that along with the programming needs and the needs of educating our students. And we've done very, very well at that on both fronts. The base assumptions here, just a reminder, our fund balance goal is 6% plus our 2% set aside for cash flow purposes throughout the planning model. Revenues, anticipating a 0% to 0.5% increase annually on enrollment, so relatively stable. Kindergarten, we use a four-year average accounting births. General ed formula, we know the legislative session gave us 2% annually for 1718 and 1819 and 1920 and beyond, 1% assumption annually. Some years we get 0%, some years we get a higher percentage, and so conservatively anticipating 1% annual. Just for your awareness, any 1% change in state aid, whether it's an increase or decrease, is $540,000 roughly. And then some inflationary increase in special ed formula and also federal funding, which correlate to the reimbursement of expenditures. Our discussion at Finance Committee and also at our previous work session centered around operating referendum renewal and various dollar amounts per pupil unit on that and various structures of what dollar amount, do we do the same dollar amount for 10 years? Do we have a dollar amount for the first two years and a different dollar amount for the remaining eight years? But we'll talk about that a little bit more later in the presentation. Expenditures, reducing any one-time expenditures from the previous year. Lane changes, retirement savings, cost of living increases, non-salary benefit types increases, contingencies for the start of school. What's not included in the long-range planning is annual budget adjustments or reductions. That's part of our annual process of looking at. So for example, this fall, once the audit's in, we've started school, we'll update the budget, upcoming budget for the audit, for the enrollment, and then we'll project forward for 1819, taking a look at what do we need to adjust in the system. The challenge becomes just overall in education is that the revenues coming in do not, are not the same dollar amount as the ongoing expenditures, even when we control and we manage those expenditures and do what we can in terms of realignment and reduction. On average, there's usually roughly a $2 million gap between the revenues and the expenditures. And so that is our challenge, irregardless of what we do with referendum. It's just our annual process, and that is, it's also good why we look and take a multi-year approach to our financial planning. This chart compares the CPI rate of inflation to the state formula and just shows that it has not been keeping pace with inflation. Another way of looking at what I just described, that the percentage increases on revenue don't match, like a 1% increase on the state aid formula doesn't in a dollar amount match the 1% increase in expenditures because they're different amounts. The 1% isn't on all our revenue. It's only on a portion of our revenue called the state aid general ed formula, 1% on expenditures, the loan, just on salaries and benefits is a different dollar amount. And there you can, just in that example, see where the gap starts to occur. So as we take all those base planning assumptions on the long-range planning model, we can run different variations on referendum. We could run them on enrollment. We can run them on expenditures, just to see what different types of examples would look like. In this case, we've left all the base assumptions the same, except change the referendum dollar amount. And so it just shows a $445 per pupil unit increase for the operating referendum and then going to just under the cap or close to the cap for the second amount, as a visual. Just a reminder, you've seen this chart before in regards to the comparisons of the current operating referendums with the Lake Conference districts. Our current operating referendum that is sunsetting is $1,412 a pupil unit, and generates about $13.2 million. So at minimum, we need a renewal, or we don't have access to that $13.2 million. The recommendation that has been brought forward and is included in your board packet for discussion purposes is $445 per pupil unit for the first two years increase above the 1,412, and then going to the cap, which is $562 a pupil unit increase above what current in the remaining eight years of the operating referendum. So that is what is included in your board packet. Also included is information in regards to estimated tax impact for the various options. We discussed that at the work session and also at Finance Committee. The $445 per pupil unit roughly has a tax impact, I want to say of about, on the average home, about $15 a month, and going to the cap is roughly $20 a month. I would open it up for discussion and questions, and any additional comments from Finance Committee members or follow-up from the work session.
Well, I'll just say a few words about how we looked at this at Finance Committee. And first, Margot, thank you for all of your hard work on this. And I know this was a very abbreviated presentation compared to what you've shown at the workshop we just completed and previously at Finance. I think most of us, I don't want to speak for the folks, but I think most of us would say that, as we've been discussing for years, public education is consistently underfunded by the state. I think we make very good use of the funds that are given to us. We do a very good job for our students and our community, and we certainly need to maintain the operating levy. And I think as good stewards of the school, my bias would be toward going to the cap. But we've also spent a good deal of time discussing what's right for the community. I think we all recognize that people are paying substantial taxes and that, you know, even though those taxes don't come from the school district, they come from other sources, we play a role in that. So I think we're trying to balance the right thing to do. I don't know that we've, you know, I know we've talked about the recommendation. I don't know that the Finance Committee came to a consensus as to what's right. I think we're going to continue thinking about this over the next month. Certainly, input from the community would be helpful if you want to contact us as members of the board. In my almost four years on the board, time and again, I've heard from constituents, "Why can't you do this? Why can't you save this?" We would gladly pay for it. And I think to have some sense of what the community is willing to pay for would be very helpful to us as we now make this decision as to what our levy funding is going to be over the next decade.
So I will say that what we struggle with is whether to go for a levy that is a two-step process or all at once, because I think that the need for the levy is very clear. And so it's really just a matter of, do we go through it in two steps to try to ease the tax impact, or do we just go all at once? And so that's something for people to understand as they're emailing us.
We're calling.
I think it's important to recognize that we've been struggling already. We make cuts every single year, sometimes approaching a million dollars. And this last year, they hurt more than usual. It started to get towards the classroom, some of our specialists and our support. And it makes a real difference to the education we can offer students. And if we take a two-step approach to collecting the money the state now allows us to collect, we miss out on, during that first step, we miss out on the difference. And it's as if the state said, "For the next two years, you get negative 2%." And imagine what we would feel about that. But we're going to do it ourselves by choosing to not collect what we can for students until two years after we start this new operating levy. That worries me, because I know that we've already been good stewards of the money, and I know that it's already starting to hurt the students. And even once we go to this new cap, the state still has a cap, and it's still low, and it's still going to hurt, and we're still going to be cutting every year. We're not going to be awash in money just because the cap moved a bit. And so taking a two-step approach to get to this cap strikes me as an abundance of caution at the expense of some of these expenditures that really help kids.
So I would just echo a lot of the comments that my colleagues have already made. I think they've pointed out just a lot of the discussion that we wrestled with in the workshop earlier. What I would add is, what I shared in the workshop is the question that I feel obligated to serve our students. What is our opportunity to do due diligence to our students? And I think, again, that gap, that balancing, is recognizing there is a lot of need. There is need in the classroom. We want to make sure that we can preserve that programming where it makes the most difference for students, and also balancing that real fiscal responsibility on the community. It does have an impact, and we hear that as well. And we have an obligation to both. But our role is really due diligence to students, what is best for kids.
Any other thoughts? John?
Margot, can you, just for the sake of the public, just take a one-step detail deeper on the two-step as opposed to what that two-step means to, so they know the distinction of what the voter would be voting for, suppose, in the two-step process?
So in this two-step process, the $445 per pupil unit would be for the first two years of the referendum. And the tax impact would be roughly $15 a month. It'll bring in additional revenue, a little over, I want to say, 4.2 million, off the top of my head, to the district. And then with the two-step process, then all in one question, then in the question would be, starting in year three, that $445 increase would increase to $562 per pupil unit, or roughly about $20 a month to the taxpayer. And that is 5.3 million annually to the district. And so the difference annually in terms of the district budget is around 1.1 million.
Thanks.
And also just, Margot, for the public's sake, the cap was increased, was it 14?
It came out of the 2013 legislative session and followed up, yeah, tax year.
And so we've chosen, we could have gone out and gone for the increase previously.
Yes, yes, we could have, yeah.
Which some districts have, most of our neighboring districts have.
And that's why this chart earlier, some have already gone out and done that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And so this will be back next month because we're looking to get a decision on the ballot language by the August meeting so that it could then be the statutory requirements, right?
Yes, we'll need a decision in August in order for it to be on the ballot.
Excellent.
And we'll continue to do work and brainstorming behind the scenes, too.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Margot. Kind of out of, we have a limited audience, so go for it.
So wait, so are you saying the difference is only $60 per year for a household?
So that, for the, so that...
$5,000.
Right.
For $500,000 home.
No, no, so...
Yeah, for the average home.
Right, for the average home, it's, the two-step would result in an additional 180 per year, $15 per month. I don't know where he got the 60 from.
She's saying the difference went up to the full cap.
Oh, it went to the full cap. Yes, an additional, correct, 180 versus 240.
$500,000.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Margot. Next on the agenda is school board agendas for this coming year.
Hold on to the question. Yeah, I don't want to set a precedent. So the board agendas, this is a annual, and I'm trying to get to the slide, I'm trying to do too many things at once. An annual approval of the board agendas, these, the board agendas are kind of a work in progress. They change throughout the year depending on the board's needs, depending on the board's needs. So it's presented here for your approval for the year, just to give us a structure to make plans for each board meeting.
And then we will have work sessions added to this as the need arises, I think is our standard protocol. The only comment I would have is in the June 2018, has superintendent performance goals paid, so that should be deleted from the agenda, because we no longer have a performance goal pay.
Right, I was just going to comment that, you know, with this being John's first time going through this with us, you know, we're kind of going based on what we've done in the past, but we'll continue to work with it, knowing that in your first year, there'll be changes to this, and then next year, you'll be ready to put together a whole new one.
There you go.
Yeah, if this set forth all of our meetings, it would be great, but it just doesn't seem to work that way. Okay, are there any questions? And if people notice anything else that needs to get pulled out, just shoot an email, and it will make the change for the next meeting, and then we will approve it at the next meeting. So the next item is board committee appointments, liaisons. We typically do this again in July for school assignments. Committees are done in January. The only change I've noted is David switching over to the high school and myself switching to Countryside.
And that was done because you'll be a parent to the high school?
Apparently.
And we cannot serve in our kid's school, correct?
Right, that's been our procedure, is that we don't serve at a school, we have a child.
Yes.
And I will no longer be a parent.
I know.
Right. I do, as a countryside, has been a great school to work with. I will miss him.
So...
The only thing I would add is we've changed the name of Community Education Services Board to Community Advisory. That's, so it just has a different name.
Okay, so if someone can get that name to Sarah Shandell, that would be great. And if people have a desire to switch their schools, they'd have to let me know, and we will have a discussion sometime in the fall about all of these assignments, and to kind of decide are there, do these all make sense as a going-forward basis. But that's it on board committee appointments. Next is policies, which is Regina.
All right, so three up for discussion this month. And just a quick overview of what we're looking at. Policy 410 addresses leaves, family, and medical. Just a couple of points in Section 7 regarding disaster leave. We had some discussion about this at the policy committee meeting and asked about the best term to use. And currently, we do have some of our contract agreements that use the term disaster leave, and probably a more accurate descriptor is "school district provided short-term disability leave." So we just discussed how do we start to weave in some of that language. I'll just pause and see if anybody has questions on 410 to take back to the policy committee.
So I think that for all three of these, most of these are driven by statute.
Correct.
And so that when we look at language that is a little bit unusual, it's probably because that's what the legislature did to us.
That is usually the answer. We ask that question frequently and are frequently told that that is accurate. But every now and then, we do have some options for modification in this particular type of policy. 414? Oh, yes.
I did notice a lot of changes in these.
Right.
So we're mostly just reviewing them in general for accuracy?
Well, it's two things. So we do have an annual review cycle, and so certain segment of our policies are reviewed so that they will have our opportunity to take a look at them once about every three or four years. And then there are handfuls, such as we'll see in action tonight, that we intentionally review by statute every year. So it does depend. So sometimes there's not a lot of change, but it's an opportunity to take a look at where has statute been updated as well, and what fits our district. But that is, that's a good question. 414, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Section 3J language is added referencing victims of sex trafficking. So just an update in that particular policy. The appendix forms with this policy are written by the state, so we don't have an opportunity for modification there. Just again, quick pause, any questions to take back to the committee about 414? Okay, we'll move on. 415, mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. The modification here to focus on is in Section 4. Stacy Geier kindly added language to clarify to whom a report should be made. So that paragraph talks about the mandated reporting obligation, but the policy didn't say anything about how do you do that. So we do want to thank Stacy for putting that in. Any other policy committee members? Anything, Amira and Lisa, that I'm missing? And are there any comments from any board members that we should take back on these?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to action items. Can I get a motion to approve the long-term facility maintenance program budget?
So moved. Second.
And it looks like, Margot, you are presenter on this one?
Yes, I am. So... So, let's see, I want to say, two years ago, the long, alternative facilities maintenance changed to long-term facility maintenance legislatively. And with that came a change in process. And the information that's attached in your board packet has detailed formulas on revenues and the expenditure plan, tenure plan for long-term facility maintenance. It is necessary for the state to receive this information because then it annually incorporates into our levy certification process. There's been no change in the tenure plan in terms of what projects we're working on, that's all partnered with the construction that we're doing, so there's been no change there. Really what this does is provide the information in a format that MDE needs. I did update for the recent bond issuance that we had this spring for long maintenance bonds, and that's important information for MDE. And it also reports it on a fiscal year basis because that's how they use the information in order to do our levy certification, where when we look at long-term facility maintenance, we looked at it on a project year basis. So basically, that's what is changing in it. It is required to be approved by July 31st. We did briefly talk about it at finance committee in June, although I didn't have all the final information yet. I may bring it back, as I did last year in August, if some audited information on the expenditure side, if I feel like enough of the data has changed from a fiscal year standpoint, again, not a project year, but a fiscal year standpoint, that it would be important to change and give the information to MDE. But basically, it's a routine report that we need to approve in order to get information to MDE and get it on our levy.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the long-term facilities maintenance program budget as set forth in the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have scheduled review of policies. Can I get a motion to approve policies 413, 506, 515, 522, and 614?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Chair, may I make, I'm not sure of the right time to request a friendly amendment to 506?
This would be a good time.
Very good. So to take these, maybe I'll take them in order and then make the friendly amendment in order.
Sure, maybe just go through each of them as a broad overview, and then we'll go back.
And then we'll backtrack a little bit.
Perfect.
Okay, so 413, this is a policy regarding harassment and violence prohibition. This policy is reviewed annually. We haven't had discussion on this. This language is very much guided by statute. We do have a change here from the policy as it has been written, and it's in Section 2A. The word gender is added in that paragraph, so it's consistent with the language in Section 1, which does talk about the types of prohibited harassment. All harassment's prohibited, but there are some particular types that are specifically listed, and the two lists did not match. So by adding the word gender, the two lists are now consistent. We did have the opportunity to run this past legal counsel, and it's their recommendation that the policy has a stronger foundation with the two matching. So that is a change in this from the original language. 506, student conduct.
Regina?
Yes?
Can you just explain for me, on this policy, is this generally more focused on, when we say harassment, is this more verbal harassment, physical harassment? I'm just trying to figure out, I had a constituent ask about it.
Sure.
Is this one is more drawn to that?
So it's all harassment, all of the types that you're referencing, and not limited to that type. All harassment is prohibited?
Okay.
And each case is slightly different?
Okay.
And I don't, would you like more in-depth? Because I would turn to lead team for more depth.
I wasn't sure.
Sure.
The constituent?
So within it...
I think they may have been driving at is harassment, can it be verbal and around just about anything?
Sure.
And they didn't know how to answer it.
Right. 3B, the definition says harassment consists of physical or verbal conduct.
That's what I thought.
So the broad, what I would provide, just in this context, is that all harassment is prohibited, but given that each case is different, I think perhaps the best answer for any individual with a specific question is to contact their, you know, their site principal, if that's appropriate, or, you know, then to go from there, because again, each situation is different.
Thank you.
And I don't know if a lead team member can add to that for better clarification. Okay, thank you.
While we're talking about this, can I ask a question or make a point, too? I'm not sure why we would refer to both sex and gender, but the Edina City Code does protect gender expression, and federal law protects gender identity, and I wonder if that's not the term that we shouldn't be using there. So we're barring discrimination against sex, sexual orientation, and gender expression.
And we did have that discussion at the policy committee meeting, and this is basically the recommendation of legal counsel in terms of which type of language to use. So I'm not able to, I hear your question, I understand it, and it's part of what we talked about. I'm not able to give a legal response as to in which context one term can be used versus another. Statute for this particular policy addresses it this way.
I don't think that's right.
No?
And I try very hard not to give legal advice to the district because I'm not as aware, but I don't think that's right.
So would you be more comfortable if there was more clarification before this moves forward?
Or to change it now, but if the, if policy committee's not comfortable, then I would go back to...
Well, this is the legal counsel recommendation. We had enough questions that we recommended that there be legal counsel contacted on this issue.
Human Rights Act doesn't refer to gender.
Mm-hmm.
Title VII doesn't refer to gender. Edina City Code does refer to gender expression.
Mm-hmm.
So this...
The state Human Rights Act does protect it under a different, broader definition. That's what they define it as, but inside it specifically goes in to protect it. And where we landed with the advice of legal counsel was, being more specific actually makes you more limited with regard to your ability to respond because you've added an extra word. What does that limit? What did that carve out? Did it carve out what it is you're trying to respond to, whereas just one word gives you a broader foundation with which to respond to the district?
The word we've added is a grammatical term that doesn't mean anything with regard to human beings. I mean, gender is just not the right word for this.
The best that I could offer, given that, again, we, you're echoing some of the discussion that we did have at the policy committee level, our goal is to provide the most solid basis for prohibiting all harassment of any kind.
And I don't think we're protecting...
So we may need to take this back, then, I think, to legal counsel, because I don't think we have the facility in this context to address that well.
I would be more comfortable with that.
And I'm not aware of any issue in delaying this for a month. I don't know if anyone can clarify a reason why that would be a bad thing. I think this could wait a month if we get more information and then bring it back in August. Sounds okay? All right.
So one thing we're going to...
Only that we have our annual policy notification information going out in early August.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can certainly, it's going to the printer, I think, tomorrow. So, but I mean, we can certainly make note that it's under advisement or something, but I, that is one of the policies that we include there.
I think I'm hearing two different things, so what I'm hearing, if I'm correct, Susan, what I'm hearing is that from a communications perspective, it's helpful to move this forward.
Well, but I think it's important that you're comfortable with whatever the language is.
Okay.
I just want to, you asked if there was any timing that's...
And that is a significant downside, so that would be delayed.
Well, it wouldn't delay the publication. We'll just make note that it's being updated.
It's under review.
Okay. So in that case, appropriate to table 506?
Right, so we're going to actually have to do a couple of procedural logistics.
413.
We're going to need to do some procedural logistics here, because this is actually the first day that we've actually put them all into one motion, so we're actually going to have to either, either withdraw the motion or vote on the motion, deny it, and then come back and bring them back one at a time.
Move separate.
So, okay, so Randy, I will...
Move separate and table, what do we have here?
Well, I think move to separate and then take each one at a time. Perhaps it might be cleaner?
Okay.
To move to separate first?
So...
And I second.
Okay, any questions, discussions? All in favor of moving to separate each of these policies? Say aye.
No, no, we're only separating on the one we want.
Oh, I thought...
And I misunderstood, I was, because we also have some nuances to the others, so move to separate, my intention on the second is that we are going to take each one at a time.
Right, so the motion has to match the second, Randy?
It does, but, well, but I misunderstood.
To separate.
All of them.
Respect for the budget, for the policy expert. Move to separate all of them.
Second.
And that's been seconded. Any questions, discussions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now can I get a motion to table 413?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 413's table. Motion to approve 506.
So moved.
If I get a second?
Second.
And I will provide a little background on 506, and I will be proposing a friendly amendment within 506. This was discussed at our June 12th meeting. The policy committee at that time made a recommendation that we still recommend that this policy is in need of further study because the language is outdated in this policy and has a clear reference to simply discipline. It's more of a punitive policy, and it's our agreement and recommendation that that is outdated. It is a part of the intent of this policy, but there needs to be more review. With that in mind, our discussion is that we provide some updates for the present time until it has that opportunity for the more thorough review. There are two points that I'd like to make with that shorter-term update. Both are in response to discussion at our June 12th board meeting. One is that the word "conduct" is proposed as in addition to the title, Student Conduct and Discipline, which provides a little bit more balance and also some direction for what we hope this study will focus on, is it's about the environment and conduct of students in a positive format in addition to what happens when things don't go well. Excuse me. The second discussion point that was referenced on June 12th is in Section 3D. There's a reference to culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies. The suggestion is that that teaching strategy language may not be appropriate in a discipline policy. Some of the committee discussion is that it's a recognition that environment does have an impact on student conduct. But after further discussion, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that that language be struck for now, and approval of the policy move forward without it, recognizing that, again, this needs some more review.
Okay, and so that friendly amendment is accepted?
Yes.
We don't need to vote on that, right, Randy?
Correct.
I didn't think so. All right, any other changes or comments on this? Any other questions?
Unless I've missed something, no.
I was going to bring that up.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the, of approving policy 506 with the friendly amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve policy 515?
So moved.
Second.
There are no changes in 515 since we reviewed it on June 2nd.
And my only question is, have we had any issues with implementing these policies or any, because if we haven't any issues with the way it's implemented or discussions about the, you know, getting the substance handled, then it seems to me I'm fine with it.
That's a pretty standard question that we do ask. It's a good question, and it's one that we typically raise at our committee meetings to ask of department heads, people who are the heaviest users of each individual policy as applicable.
Okay.
Is this serving the intended purpose? Is it working well? Is it clear? Part of it is also about wayfinding for people who need the information. Can it be found? So that tends to be part of the general review. So we're not aware of any concerns.
All right, any other questions? All in favor of approving policy 515, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, can I get a motion to approve policy 522?
So moved.
Second.
So 522, this is part of, one of our policies that is reviewed annually on student sex non-discrimination. The change in this policy is one for conformance with our other policies, changing the word shall to will. Other than that, there are no changes in this policy.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving policy 522, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Can I get a motion to approve policy 614?
So moved.
Second.
So policy 614, the assessment plan, this is a new policy. We discussed it on June 12th. No changes have been made since June 12th.
All right. Any questions on 614? Hearing none, all in favor of approving policy 614, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I think we are through the action items. We have information items which are included in the board packet. Looks like their health services report, assessment plan, minor change to the EME agreement, and revised appendices to policy 503 and 509. Anybody have any, we don't usually discuss the information items, they are for information only. Any leadership updates or committee reports?
I'm going to have Susan make a couple announcements.
Just given the timing of the next school board meeting, I just wanted to make an announcement for the public to remind them that we do have a school board election this fall, and that candidate filing opens August 1st through the 15th. And so if you need more information, there's going to be more information on the website, and filing take place in the superintendent's office or the communications office. And then we, as I said, the family handbook with all of the annual updates and a lot of forums and information for families will be going out in early August to all parents. We just wanted to make sure that people knew about that. We're also working on a candidate information session, going back to the school board election, tentatively looking at, what was the date, Monday, August 7th, but we haven't finalized that yet, so we'll be looking at that. We usually try to do a candidate information session in the middle of the filing period just to kind of let people know what it's like, so we'll be working with getting that information out as well. Thank you.
Any other announcements or updates, committee reports?
I had a, for Teaching and Learning Committee, I thought we should just bring up our discussion around pre-AP 10 and pre-AP 9. We had a discussion around the materials for next year and how that class is going to look, and I think the board has talked about this for many years. And one of the things we had talked about was around book selection and theme. And when it came to the committee, there was certainly not consensus among the three board members about there really truly being a change in the theme that we had been talking about for quite a while. And so I had talked to our chair, saying that I do think it's something that needs to be discussed further. And I guess I just want to say that I'm a little frustrated that I thought the board had been relatively clear about that, and to say that, just to see the books on the list that are the same themes and to be told that they're not when it's clear it's the same book list that have been used for several years, seems to me to not be reacting to what we have discussed. So I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the board was aware of that, and I know I've already talked to, talked to Chair Walen Friedman about that, because I think it's something we need to bring into a work session at a minimum.
Okay, just so I'm clear, the request is to have it come up at a work session, because if you want it, it fit, what you've just said fits within the committee reports. To have a discussion, we would have to modify the agenda for tonight if you wanted to discuss it tonight, otherwise we can add it to a work session. So I'm just trying to get an understanding of what you're asking.
Oh, you're at procedurally.
Procedurally.
Ah.
And Randy's always available to correct me, so, but I do believe that if we're going to discuss something that's not on the agenda, you have to have a motion to add it to the agenda, otherwise...
Yeah, I wasn't planning for it to be added to the agenda, I guess.
Okay, so that's fine. So then we will, actually, the plan is to compile a list of items for the school board to take a look at this year in work sessions, bring that list to the board and say, okay, do we want to add things to this list? Do we want to subtract things from the list? So that will obviously be something we put on that list at the top of it.
Okay, I guess my final comment would be that another year now will go by where this hasn't changed, and that, to me, is of concern when we had, we've been told before, the catalog's about to come out, we can't do anything about it, and here we are again, so.
All right. Any other updates? Hearing none, I think we'll give Dr. Schultz credit for the short meeting here. This is, obviously, this is a sign of things to come.